Thank you for joining us this evening. Kim, you have the roll call?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
We saw that the Board of Education approved the agenda for the November sixth, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting. Motion? Second. Don and Wayne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And the first order of business is the spotlight. Oh, excuse me, oath of office. I gotta get somebody's word in first.
The bell.
Excuse me. It's a different spotlight. Spotlight's on our new board member. Kim, you want to deliver the oath of office for it?
Well, we actually totally did that. So, ceremonially, if you could read the oath again, this is what we've done in the past. That would be perfect. Thank you. Sure will. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Baldwoodville Central School District Board of Education member according to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you. So, we're really pleased to have Kristi Povetto join us. She has six years, I believe, previously on the board, so that experience is welcomed. We did have seven applicants. We offered interviews to people, and our selection, of course, was Kristi. So, thank you. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you for collecting the items. Look forward. I'm so glad to be back.
And I think we have the spotlight now, Joe, right?
We do. All right, thank you. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, we just finished the nation. We're going to first start off with our students' spotlight. So, we're excited this evening to recognize our committed students who place among the top fifty thousand students who entered the 2024 competition of the 2001 two preliminary SAT National Scholarship Qualifying Test. According to the National Scholarship Committee, those being named committed students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. These students represent valuable national resource, recognizing their accomplishments as well as the role they play within schools and their academic development, which we know is vital for the success of our nation. We hope that this recognition will allow their educational opportunities and encourage that as they continue their pursuit of academic success. So, we're excited this evening to have four students, Baker High School students, that everyone can be recognized. We'll start first with L. C. Dwyer. Congratulations. Not able to be here this evening, Tana Montalas. So, congratulations, Tana. Nest, our star soccer player as well, the winning hole athlete from the past weekend's regional competition, Andrew Young. Last but certainly not least, Ryan Wilson.
We can say a couple things. In some order, if you want to get a picture, parents, if the parents get a chance, Kim will set.
And then congratulations to our four committed students. At this time, we're ready to turn our recognition over to our staff spotlight. So, we're excited this evening to recognize Marine Mo Murphy from Palmer Elementary School. So, Mo, why don't you come on up? Stay here for a second. I'm going to read a few things. So, we're excited this evening to be turning our attention now to our staff. This is one we'd like to recognize, Mo Murphy. Mo was a speech therapist at Palmer Elementary School. She's been employed by our district for nearly forty years and has had significant impact on homeless students and families. Mo was nominated by Palmer Elementary School Principal Alex Yuen and Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Carrie Lamakia. I'd like to read you a part of Mr. Yuen's nomination. Marine Murphy's work in supporting students and their voices has provided support and confidence essential to promoting students' success. The connections that her work and tremendously positive demeanor create with students and families is immeasurable. I cannot express how deserving she is of this recognition and the way that she has impacted lives of others and the laws of essential school district community. Thank you, Mr. Yuen, for making this nomination of Ms. Murphy. Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Carrie Lamakia, also acknowledged that Ms. Murphy was deserving of the recognition. Ms. Lamakia said, "Mo goes above the yawn for her students and her care and support exceeds expectations." Most recently, Ms. Murphy has continued to show support to a student and his family as he transitioned from elementary school to a new program. Ms. Murphy continues to ensure that students are supported, feels a sense of belonging, and can transition well into this new program. This is just one example of the levels of support Ms. Murphy has provided to her students over the past four decades. And you can see Lamakia for nominating Ms. Murphy as well. Her dedication and commitment to her students is just a part of what makes her such an amazing educator. Thank you for helping make our district a more secure and supportive community. And I can also say that, you know, at least one of my sons went through the speech program at Harvard and certainly benefited from Mo's work with him. I can't think of a good one to add. So, on behalf of the district, you can see by the number of staff from Harvard that's here this evening, we'd like to welcome them as well and see them. Everyone, the name for everyone's follow. We'd also like to provide special recognition this evening, special leadership recognition to Tony Cardone, our Director of Elementary and Education, for his selection. And we have the Council of the Strategic Association of New York State, or the St. East. St. East supports and provides benefits to more than twenty-two thousand public school principals, assistant principals, directors, coordinators, and essential services leaders in public schools and BOC programs in New York State. This will be Tony's second term serving as the St. East President. So, on behalf of the district, congratulations, Tony.
Mo and Tony, congratulations and just highlights, again, our excellent staff and administration. We appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much. Moving on, the next item is the correspondence, board activities, and committee reports. And I guess starting at the top, the New York State School Board Convention was held a couple weeks ago. If anybody wanted to report on that, we had very good attendance there, so it was a good event. Any comments? Luke, you said you had a couple of comments. Go ahead.
Thank you, Victor. I remember it was a good experience for me, the first one. There were a lot of great presentations, topics, from challenges with electric buses to the current landscape with hiring and retention of fantastic staff, all the way to the legal law parts for board members. So, along with all the great vendors that showed quite a few intriguing and, in some cases, impressive things for our schools and educators to come. So, I got a lot out of it, and I thought it was a fantastic event.
Thank you. Thank you. The other, let's see, there's policy, any other comments, policy reading or anything over a couple weeks ago? Go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, I wanted to report out, to show to one of us that went to the NISBA conference.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I, two of the, or specifically, two of the sessions that I went to was, one was Strategies for Effective Board Meetings, and then another session was, that is, the Questioning Development of Effective Questioning Techniques for Board Members. I did attend the Strategies for Effective Board Members meetings a year prior, and I am very pleased to say everything, just about everything that they recommend to run a board meeting successfully and efficiently, we're doing. We have our student, student board member, we, agenda planning, they always put in their, you know, rotate board members, so they get familiarity of what involves the agenda planning, in kitted. One thing that we don't do is that they, a lot of districts use students to be at our board meetings, to welcome community members, to understand what the board does, what their role is in the district. So, that was a great takeaway from that. And Tanya also attended, that is, the Questioning Development of Effective Questioning and Techniques. The lady who presented was really awesome. She actually works for Board Docs as well, and then she's a consultant. And bottom line is questions. We have to make sure we ask appropriate questions. We shouldn't be afraid to ask questions. And Tanya, sorry, because there was something after a couple of other good words.
I think one of the biggest takeaways was discussing the type of questions that board members are able to ask, and she categorized them into three areas. One was, of course, governance, that focused on the policy question. The other had to do with strategic questions and finally generative questions, which I found it interesting. And as I said, it was well attended, it was impactful, and hopefully we'll apply some of what we learned from that. And there was also several great workshops related to diversity, equity, inclusion, and the long presentation by the ESO Cs. We also attended the Black Caucus meeting, which was hosted, of course, by the Black Caucus of NISBA, and they talked about marginalized groups and strategies and approaches to close the gap in addressing the issues of specific subgroups. So, all around, it was great to network with so many wonderful people from OCs and other districts. It was pretty awesome.
Thanks for just stopping in, Tanya. And the other one I just wanted to make a little mention about was the football conference on Thursday. A lot of great information, a lot of things coming down this, this past year that these board members need to be aware of. One of them specifically was, there's some proposed changes in upcoming legislative hearings that, as a board, we'll have to watch for those types of things. And then there was a lot of talk about reviewing our policy for corporal punishment. So, that's one thing we need to look out for, see what's coming down the pipeline. And there was a long discussion about school board members and the use of social media. Just you have to be aware of, being a board member, what we've put out there. There was a longer session about putting a disclaimer if you use your social media pages as both private use, and then if you're also doing anything, marketing, not marketing, but reporting information out of your school district, not just to make sure that people understand that it's your personal and it's not relating to the role of our board. Those were the real big takeaways for me.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anything else to add? You want to talk, there was a, we had a facilities meeting just before this, so, Mazy, Kim, do you want to just give us the highlights of that? We did review the buildings in progress.
Sure. So, we have a lot of projects going on. We're wrapping up the small three-point-eight million dollar project, and we're moving directly into the Derby project that was voted on, I believe, three years ago, it was coming May, I believe, or two years ago it was coming May. And then we are also planning, so that project will be coming forward, will be going out to bid in January, and hoping to start work in possibly April timeframe, definitely by June. We'll be in full mode of construction in Derby. And in addition to that, we talked a lot about the project the voters just approved this past May. And the good news is, is we hope to have some work moving forward with the new turf field over the summer as well, and not soon after that. So, we have a lot of work going on, a lot of planning, and then there'll be more phases to come with both of those projects. We will definitely by early 2024, we'll have some positive news in regards to how bids are coming in and where we are with going forward. And of course, we're always taking a look at our safety and security. We talked a little bit about that with the threat detection units, film on our windows and cameras, and that's all coming out of the Smart Schools Contact funding, and we're just waiting for some approvals to come back from the state for that. So, I think those were the major highlights. I don't know if there's anything else, if anybody else wants to join in.
I think that is the highlights, and certainly there's a lot of facilities improvements going to go on over the next three and four years, and certainly we are very appreciative of the community's support we receive for that. The community's really been wonderful, supporting the school and the future of the school. Any, any other activities or anything else to discuss at this time? Okay, I think next on the agenda is the student board report. Maya?
So, for today, the winter semi-formal at Baker has, the days were decided. It will be December twenty-second. The theme is Under the Northern Lights. Soon, so I had an idea, and soon I will have district-wide helpers from Derby, Ray, and the elementaries to help better inform you of what is going on across schools. It's hard for me to know what's happening at Ray or at Derby if I'm being there, so soon I will have helpers under, you know, to better inform you of just anything going on with students across the district. Along with helpers, I'm working on an idea for a development connection with other student board members in other districts. I believe it would be a wonderful idea to possibly connect with them and see what they are working towards with their districts as well as with their students, and possibly having a meeting with them so we can all share our ideas. I discussed with Mr. Denton about possibly introducing a sign language class for the curriculum. I believe that it would be an amazing addition, and it's widely used, and it's just an amazing talent, and then just to have in the future. I would personally love to most learn sign language, so I think that would be something amazing to push for. The junior high musical, Finding Nemo Junior, is the play this year, and you have to reserve a ticket. The dates will be on the seventeenth and eighteenth, but they are almost gone. The Butterfly Run fundraiser is, will be happening soon. I don't know too much about it, but I did do a little bit of research when I was meeting with Mr. Denton, and there is a website to donate. You can also do the Butterfly Run. It's something amazing to participate in. It raises, it raises like a good, a good amount of money, and it all goes to a charity from what I know. But the only other thing is, no cart shortage. That was a shock. I saw that. But otherwise, it's always really been going on with the students and self-respect.
Okay, thank you. I love your idea of networking with other student reps. And actually, at the convention, Andrew was talking to the school, and they were exploring having a student rep, and I know that you and Grayson personally do this stuff.
I did, because we have a fantastic one over here.
I did research, because I actually had the idea while I was at, while I was at the last board. And from what I know, there are two at Liverpool, and I'm unsure of what other districts, but I thought with that idea, it would be nice to, they may be doing things that we aren't doing, and we may be doing things that say they would think, hey, this is a great idea for our students. So, maybe I could have similar meetings like them with the, with the board meetings, and we can all just share ideas and overall just improve any, anything that we can.
Thank you. Communication's key, isn't it? Also, I was going to wrap up on the activities, just some, as the ball sports wraps up, we've had a lot of successes on the field. I know in Boys and Girls Cross Country, we have three runners, they'll be at state cross-country meet. Cameron Barton, Noah Covert, and Ryan Wilson are all going to states, and congratulations to them, and Coach Skidary and Coach Dolan. Girls Swim, Eva Smith is going to, was named the swimmer of the meet at the state qualifiers. And I know Olivia McFannis was a sectional champion in the one-hundred butterfly, so congratulations to Coaches Ludden and Tasso. And then girls volleyball at recently defeated Liverpool wore the sectional three title. Congratulations to Danielle Saylor, and we're, they are their coach, their coach. And then the boys soccer team won section three and won their regional game, so they're going to the final four next Saturday, which unfortunately was in Milltown, which is a little ways away from Drake. And I know Mr. Henty cheered them on, right?
I did. Go Bees!
Did a good job, did a good job. So, congratulations to Coach Skimaker in Kaden and Coach Ross. Been a very, very exciting and successful ball season. I think we'll afford more of the same, so, thank you.
The only other thing that athletic-related, but we did also have the New York City Cuban Conference Championships on October thirtieth, and fourth place overall in the national class. I'm obviously biased, but I thought we were, I don't know how they judge, I'm not going to pretend like I know how they judge, but from what I heard from the folks that were in the stands sitting next to me, that they thought our performance, we were the second-to-last band to perform, and up to that point, they thought we were the top fan. So, certainly want to thank Mr. Vanderstow and the field band staff and the students for working very hard over the course of the year. They've progressed tremendously, and it was an awesome show, and they've represented us well, so, thank you to the field band.
That's a great point. They do a great job. So, next on the agenda is the request to speak, and we certainly invite and appreciate public input. In the interest of time, we're going to ask that you try to limit your comments to three minutes, and that you do not mention names or certain divisions, but we are very happy to have the public join us. And Kim, do we have anybody tonight?
Yes, we do. We have three speakers.
Okay.
Our first speaker, or, um, Steve Young, in regards to State of the Arts.
Hey, that was, that was a sign-up for the facilities meeting before this, but, sorry. He didn't need to sign in, but.
All right, sorry.
All right, good.
All right. So, my name is Steve Young. I'm in my tenth season building props for the musicals, and first with Marching Band. Anybody who knows me, you know, they've been to a performance at our odd or at our home show, you know what I do. I have three minutes, so I'm going to get right into it. The reason I'm here tonight is I want to bring to light the decision that was made from my understanding by the administration to make tickets for the musicals free. I'm not sure how many of you know that that happened, but I want to make you all aware of it, and I want the community to be aware of it. The musical program, now called BTAP, has been self-funded through ticket sales for a very long time. Starting this year with this decision, they're reduced to a line item on a budget. I want to know how the district can guarantee the same money will be available year after year. BTAP can, and they do it with the unique opportunity to sell their outstanding product that they put on the stage, year after year and show after show. It's my understanding that this decision is rooted in word equity. Well, I want to know what's equitable about devaluing the arts. I'm told equity in this case is for those that may want to see a show but can't afford tickets. Well, I'll say that BTAP staff has never and would never turn anyone away who wanted to see a show that's fallen on hard times. They've shared with me many ideas to make sure that everyone who wants to see a show can. This decision presents a false perception of equity and falls far short of its stated intent. I do not support a decision that marginalizes the efforts of one to bring a false sense of equity to another, and neither does anyone else that I've spoken with. There's a sign over the district office door that says three words: Build, Educate, and Empower. Build. This decision makes it much harder for us to build. Educate. This decision removes the education of understanding the value of efforts and the benefits of reinvestment. Empower. BTAP was a standalone entity with professional guidance and student involvement. A heavy hand of administration and centralized control is the opposite of empowerment. I appreciate that the district wants to invest in the arts, and investment on a profit that can have a great impact. There's other arts programs that don't have the same opportunity that BTAP does. So, here's my proposal. Re-instate the ticket sales for the high school show and both shows going forward. Let BTAP build, empower, and educate as they have for years. Let's set a date for a table discussion, and we'll take the seventy-six thousand dollars out of general funds that was given to BTAP and have a meaningful discussion with the arts directors and their staff. The marching band does not have the same opportunity to sell a product like BTAP does, and I can promise you that the ideas that your directors have will elevate B-Ville Arts far beyond any decision that administration can make on its own. If this administration wants to help the community, talk to your directors. Listen to them. Get involved. Make sure they have what they need, and let them do what they do, because those guys do better than anybody else. I want to thank you all for your time. Go Bees!
The next speaker is Nora DuBois. I hope I said your name right.
You did.
I did that, and the topic was arts.
Good evening. I'm concerned about the recent decision to eliminate admission charges for school events impacting programs like the Baldwoodville Theater Arts Program, BTAP. The district's mission to educate and empower should include teaching that goods and services come at a cost. A live theater production is not free. Someone must pay for it. The district doesn't have the power to make something free. Only change who pays for it. Why would you take a program that was self-funded and make it part of budget allocations? If I'm feeling cynical, I think it may be to make sure I vote yes on the budget every year. If I'm even more cynical, I think there may be some state programs that the district would like to be able to apply for aid from if only they didn't charge admission. As I watch my tax bill tick up each year ever higher, I can't believe you would absorb the entire expense of these productions when the community members who want an entertaining evening out are willing to pay for it. Opportunities like the Baldwoodville Theater Arts Program allows students a chance to participate in all of the areas of theater production, to include the financial side. If you're committed to PBL, why would you eliminate that portion of the learning for our students? BTAP has had every incentive to spend why. BTAP has had every incentive to spend wisely. We all know what happens to those spending decisions when you receive your budget from on high. You spend what you're given or you won't get it next year. And instead of controlling your own money, you have to beg for what you need from others. You may think that you can promise that they will always get the money they need, but we all know that is a promise that will be broken. Priorities change, budgets tighten, and hard times come. I've heard this decision was made to signal the district's commitment to equity. I fail to see how it advances the cause of equity to make someone's work free. Is it really the board's position that it is an injustice to ask someone to pay for evening's entertainment? Another question, how do people treat goods and services that they don't pay for? All you have to do to find out is ask the people who repair school chromebooks. The last thing we want our students to experience is the devaluation that comes with being free. Imagine what that will look like in the theater context. Tickets will be snapped up by those who are fastest at reserving them. There will be people who reserve tickets and don't show up. Since the tickets are free, they will have no incentive to ask someone to take them. People will be prevented from seeing a show that will have empty seats in it and students will miss out on the chance to perform for a packed house. Our students work too hard to prepare a production worthy of buying tickets for, only to have empty seats because the tickets were free. The board feels that it is important to provide an opportunity to see the production for free. There are many ways that could be done without destroying the model BTAP has used to this point with great success. Do not fail them by continuing this short-sighted policy. A fundamental shift of this nature should not have happened without consideration of its full impact and without a son of the community. I trust that the board will take steps immediately to undo this policy and limit the damage that has been done. Thank you.
Do we have one more speaker?
Anthony Saracini and the agenda item is Leo Johnson. Evening.
Thank you. My name is Anthony Saracini. I'm here tonight representing the community and the initiative to name the new Baker Athletic Facility after Leo Johnson. First of all, I'd like to thank you for listening to the Baldwinsville community. This initiative is supported by many in the community. For some reason, a policy was put into place to not honor extraordinary folks in our school district for setting themselves apart from, from others. What is amazing to me about this policy is that it goes against everything Baldwinsville stands for. We have the most unique community I've ever seen. We are unique simply because of all the hard work and dedication from those that came before us, setting standards and traditions. This community elected all of you on this board to be listeners, thinkers, and most importantly, leaders of this great district. I'm here tonight to ask for the board to change the name policy for the Baldwinsville School District. This will allow for past educators and administrators to be remembered for their great contributions to this amazing school district. In my eyes and the many that supported this petition, Leo Johnson is one of these educators and administrators that should be honored on the new Baldwinsville Athletic Facility. His commitment to the Baldwinsville Athletic Program was more than a coach. Leo was a teacher, an administrator, a mentor, and a legend. And I just wanted to uh to read, you know, over the past few months, I've received some uh, some pretty awesome letters of support from Mr. Johnson and this initiative. Uh this one comes from Sue Allen and Sue Allen was a longtime uh teacher and uh physical education teacher in the district. Um let's see, yeah, one minute here. I'm, over here. I am writing in support of naming the athletic facility for Leo Johnson. His complete dedication to the school, the staff, and his students is lasting, is a lasting testimonial to the impact he has had on all. The athletic facilities are not just used by athletic teams, but by all students in their daily school day. I was hired when Leo was teaching, coaching, and director of physical education. His support for physical educators was evident in our staff meetings and personal discussions. When we met at teacher conference days, the PE staff would share ideas, methods, and activities that helped us to be more effective teachers and in turn impacted our students to have more positive outcomes. He added the athletic director to his resume in the nineteen eighties and worked to add more sports to the inter-scholastic program. A female, a few female students approached him about adding golf as a competitive sport. In that same year, a coach was named and competition began. Women's lacrosse became a sport only one of four schools in its first year. He set up practice schedules for women's sports that had equal time and space for practices. His skill as a motivator has elevated the quality of the physical education and inter-scholastic programs during his tenure at Baldwinsville Schools. I've heard that policy has changed regarding to naming buildings or facilities after individuals. The district is every school building named after prominent and deserving person. Athletic field, facilities have always received the names of its most deserving individuals. Leo taught, coached, served as a dedic- served and dedicated his career during the same era as the other recipients of these naming honors. I appreciate your consideration and attention to this matter, Sue Allen, um and, and coach of every sport possible. You know, I, I think it's uh, it's pretty evident that there is significant support in the community for this initiative. And I was kinda hoping that I hear in the, in the uh facilities report, there would be some, some type of communication on, on or discussion about that rule. That, was that discussed by any chance?
Uh, facilities really doesn't have the first step here. This will be, this is not typically not a question and answer session, so this is a little different. But if you look on the agenda, there's a discussion of the policy later than the agenda. The policy has to be changed before discussion can take place. Okay?
Okay. Now, now, is there a, there is a policy discussion?
There's a, there's a policy against naming facilities right now.
Yep.
And so we'll be discussing that policy later.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your input. We do appreciate your, your feelings and we appreciate that. With that, since that question answered, we'll be dealing with it now, but we'll discuss it later. Thank you. Moving on, the, the next item is the consent agenda. Resolve the board education approval consent agenda for someone to get attached. Andrew? Luke? Okay, um. I'm assuming we're now open for discussion, so we have several items on here, so I assume there may be some questions. The, anything, the, the one thing, yeah, go ahead.
Um, thank you. Um, um, as we've discussed previously, um, I did send um some questions um for clarification for tonight, um but obviously I need to speak those out in public too. So I, I did have a question as to on the consent agenda um for the indoor and athletic facility coordinator. Um and the question that I posed was um we're being asked to approve a new position and from that position. Um and I asked for the job description, um the data that supports that this position is required, is, is necessary. Um and then the other question that I posed was um if there's a need for this position, who was performing those duties previously?
So I can, I can respond to the majority of those questions. The first, uh, you know, when you look at what are the responsibilities, as I put in the Friday communication, it's similar to uh the job responsibilities of stadium coordinator. So there's an individual that is given a stipend to manage that facility, be there to greet officials, coaches, teams, uh and spectators. They're there to help organize and, and run the event. Uh so it would be similar in scope. Uh they would be doing that work and responsible for that. Uh they would be essentially the person in charge during those events. And then given some of the added security and safety measures that we put in place this school year, those also would be in the purview of uh this individual. Uh when it comes to who's currently performing these responsibilities, we do not have a dedicated person doing that work, hence why we're proposing uh to have this uh individual support the indoor uh facilities. Uh there's lots of times where there's multiple events going on in the building and yes, the athletic director uh or other site um crowd control are there, but who's organizing those individuals? That would be this person managing that work. Looking at the data, similar to the number of events that take place at the stadium, there's over, I, I believe the exact number was thirty-one, thirty-two days. Uh and the fall stadium coordination and in this case, uh we've looked at what's scheduled right now at the high school, uh between the gymnasium and the pool. And there's over sixty events that fall over the course of thirty-one days. So my proposal was asking for uh this position to be created at the same rate as what we're utilizing for the contractually agreed upon stadium coordinator, seven thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars or something to that value.
And you have that covered in the budget, so.
We do.
Okay.
I, I have a couple more questions for the consent agenda. Um, the other question I posed was under contract, contract agreements. Um and as we learned at the board meeting, um all contracts are brought to the board regardless of the dollar amount that has been in the past. Um so I just had a question. Um I wasn't quite sure what the um the contract for, for LearnWell was and that was a question that I posed. Um Joanne, you did give a response. Um just, I was questioning what services a company provide and is this in the company?
So it's not a new company. It's tutoring services for students that are in treatment facilities. Uh so therefore, uh we've utilized these, uh this company in the past to support tutoring for students. Um again, this is the first time this is coming to the board because typically the contracts were approved at the district level, but given our new procedure, everything's coming to the board.
Thanks. And the last one that I had was on a trip request. Um my question was, um is there a request uh for training and competition or just training? Um and along with that, I mean, review the, the structure of the cost of it. Um it said that each student or student athlete was responsible for like five hundred and eighty-five dollars a jive. Um has everyone been able to meet the, that cost? Um and I know we did change our policy last year to extend the days that students can be out of school for um sporting events. Um so my real question was, was it just training and competition?
Yes, it is. Um similar to other groups that go uh on these, on these, they practice and they also compete. So when they're not competing, they do a practice just to keep things moving forward. So uh this actually would have traditionally fallen over a spring break. Given the fact our spring break or April break is later this year, um that's why this group is looking. It's, it's a trip that they have taken in prior years, but it is both competitions and practice because they're in season.
Yeah, I, I did hear too that uh doing it, doing the trip in this manner was a cost savings on the flights and all. So it was far more efficient cost-wise for them to do this particular, uh day span, so it's great. And I haven't been to, I've been to Disney, but not to this particular complex, but I bet I'd, I'd like it, so. Any other questions, discussions? Wayne, Wayne would like to, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
What is something less exciting and fun? I just had a question on the statement of cash position. I don't know if it's for Shaw or him, but there's a category for um special aid. I don't know what that is, but it's in a deficit right now. I was just wondering if you anticipate running that deficit through the year or if there will be additional appropriations?
So we're waiting, we're, so we've submitted all of our title, our federal funding grants through the state education department. We anticipate receiving those, just like we have in every other year. But until we receive the official approved, that's why it's showing in the red right now. We have not received any confirmation that the budgets is, the budgets were uh approved in those categories.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh new business line A is uh the policies. And I think this is the first reading, so I guess we will entertain um questions on that. Is that?
Just one general comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just regarding, so as we've done traditionally in the past, any adjustment is made in red. You'll see a series that we're looking to retire based on the fact that we're trying to uh work through with legal counsel our overall policy review, which is uh focused on making sure that only required policies are ones that are necessary because they have, um they're not in law or they're not in regulation and they solidify the board's position. Those are the only ones we're recommending, obviously, for maintaining. The rest are listed there for retirement because they're not necessary.
So any discussion on nine A? That's the first reading.
I just wanted to make a comment, um and I didn't catch it in our policy meeting last week. Um for the series, uh six hundred series to retire, um and if you log in, you know, if you open up those, that series of six hundred uh policies, um the majority of them have at the bottom um what law or regulation that the policy already it, uh consists, or excuse me, is in. Um but there were a handful that I was noticing in preparation that don't have um any law or regulations attached to it. Um so I'm not quite sure about retiring those. If our main purpose of retiring policies is because that specific policy is already embedded in um a law or regulation.
So that, again, these were all reviewed by legal. Uh and so the ones that you're saying listed as recommendation, if it's listed there, that it's because of, it's already in the regulations of the law. It's possible that over the course of however many years prior to this, the actual policy was not updated at the bottom to reflect the laws that they reflect or that they're in or the regulations that they're in. So again, these all went through the legal review and it, and it may be that it's not listed there, but we have documentation from legal saying, based on their recommendation, that it's in the law or it's in regulations, therefore it's not necessary. That's why at the top of each page, it specifically says that highlighted in red. So I feel comfortable with what we discussed in the policy committee meeting, having the board move forward with that recommendation based on legal.
For, for the ones that don't indicate a law or regulation, can, can we have documentation showing what law or regulation that they are in? I understand what you're saying, that these are older and they may not have been updated, these policies that are being recommended. Um but just for clarification, I, it's only a handful that have them. I don't know how many others is open to that.
Certainly if the board wants additional information, I would have to go back to legal to say, could you please provide additional information other than what you provided, stadium, those laws?
So we've already have, run this by legal. Legal says all this is already codified in law, policies are unnecessary. And now the question is, does the board feel it's necessary to, how many are there, shall it?
Um, I, out of the six hundred, six thousand series, excuse me, one, two, three, four, I got, I got four.
Do you feel it's necessary to go back to them again?
Well, I think part of the conversation we had in policy was for, and one of the things we had suggested or recommended, any of the policies that were listed or being recommended for retirement, um could there be, you know, some, some type of uh connection to the law or the regulations so the public could reference it? So in terms of ensuring transparency. So in terms of ensuring transparency, if, if a community member wanted to access this particular policy that wasn't there, they'd be able to quickly access the reference to the policy that wasn't there. So for the four, just to be consistent with what we discussed at policy for four, just to be consistent, I would suggest.
So I, I guess at this point, let's get consensus before we spend more legal dollars. How, can I ask just for show hands, who feels that this needs to be re-reviewed? Who feels it doesn't need to be re-reviewed? Okay, so I think consensus, we're not going to go back and ask them again. They've already issued one opinion. Okay. Any other discussion on the first reading of those policies? Okay, move to nine B. Now this is the second reading. So we're ready for motion resolved, board of education approved. The Baltimore Central School District Policy Series, one thousand, five thousand, seven thousand, reviewed, retired, update pursuant to the attached. Motion, Don? Andrew? Thank you. Any questions? So this is second reading. Any questions on these?
No, I think the policy committee was all agreed that they're being, uh, great.
Yeah, thank you. This did go through policy. Thank you. Well, hearing no discussion, then we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion, motion carries. Thank you. Now nine C. Resolved Board of Education, the Baltimore Central School District Board of Education nominee, Pete Sawaki, from the Windsor Central School District Board of Education, and the Groom Tioga Bosse's Board of Education, for NISBA Director of Area Four, due to vacancy created by Sandra Ruffo's election as New York State School Board Association President. Motion? Move, Wayne? Sam? Any discussion? I think everybody does know that our Area Four Director, Sandra Ruffo, who's done a great job, is going to be the president next year. And so they're looking for somebody to move in here and I think he sent us all a letter or an email. I think everybody's fine. Any discussion, anything? Okay, let's proceed to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I just take a minute to mention that President-elect Ruffo will be joining us in December, I think, right?
She's gonna, she's, uh, going to be, uh, attending our board work session. Uh, as it's, as it's tentatively planned right now, December eighteenth. And she's going to arrive early and we'll do a couple of tours, a few of our buildings with students. Some more information to come as that gets closer, but we're excited to have her be a part of our school community.
Very nice to look forward to seeing her. This will by this time, by the way, be the second time because she did attend, I believe, the initial inaugural play in our auditorium. Peter Pan, sorry.
She did?
Okay. Okay, um, item D. Resolved Board of Education, approve the authorization of application for corrective tax rule for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four pursuant to the attached.
Motion?
Shelley?
Second.
Christie, thank you. Can we just give a, just a very brief description here?
Sure. So we work with the county. The county sends us a recommendation. They usually have to do with an assessment that either came in after the tax rules or went through the process to, um, you know, have your tax, tax adjustments. So that's the recommendation in regards to this particular one, as you said.
So more formality than just, it's on the panel, probably, to give a guess. Thank you. Questions? Proceed to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now E. Resolved Board of Education, deny the authorization of application for corrective tax rule for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four pursuant to the attached. So this is just the flip of that.
Do you want to respond now?
Yeah.
So yes, this one, we actually also went to our legal council lot and I believe there was more information provided to the board last week. The county and our legal board agree that this one should be denied.
Okay, so questions, discussion? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I'm, I'm sorry. Did I get it first and second on that? Okay, thank you. So first, second, uh, Don or Luke, take your pick. I'll second that. Okay, sorry. I was moving too fast at now.
That's all.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And F. Resolved Board of Education, approve the award of con, award of contract for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four capital outlay project, joint construction contract to Bellows Construction Specialties LLC pursuant to be attached. We'll ask for a motion. Thank, thank you, Sam. Senator Wayne, thank you. I think that that was pretty self-explanatory. I don't know if there's any other questions or discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now G. Resolved Board of Education, approve change order number zero zero five pursuant to be attached. Motion? Luke? Andrew? Pretty self-explanatory. Questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And H. Resolved Board of Education, accept donation of one granite bench and one tree, tree donated to the Baltimore Central School District by the fundraising officer, Officer Jennifer Patrini and Andrea Natoli and Deputy Katie Kruger in memory of April Wood. Sam? Shelley? Any questions, discussion?
If you have one, um, being this is accepted, would the tree be planted now or would that be something that would be taken care of after a lot of the renovations and things?
So it will be done when it's appropriate timing for planting of trees, uh, which right fall are certain ones that are, if I remember correctly. So we are making sure that they're in locations that are not going to have to be adjusted in the future. So it, it will likely be near the stadium, uh, in a location that, you know, there's no future plans for updates.
benches are easier to move.
Absolutely.
Just trying to.
So, uh, the chief operations officer, Rick, Rick Borter, obviously is working with Ken and the rest of us to make sure that it's in the appropriate location.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, uh, our thanks go out to officers and deputy for their efforts in, in a very worthwhile, thoughtful project. Item I. Resolved Board of Education, amend the appointment for a minimum of three members of the Board of Education to serve as members of the audit committee for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Four members serving on the audit committee for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four are Angela Quinty, Victor Jenkins, Christina Pabeto, and Sherry Schraven. Additionally, the Board will appoint one community representative and that community representative should be Andrea Person. Motion? Luke? Sam? Wayne, thank you. Okay, this is more formality to get, uh, to correct that because Tony was on before.
Correct.
So, uh, we're kind of, because the update changed the board.
Christie is, you too.
Christie's, uh, replacing Tony, I think. Well, I think she served before. She's, uh, moved prior to the audit. Discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, uh, we are ready now to, that's the end of the voting at this point, for right now. We have the round table and the first discussion on the round table was policy twenty-three sixty, which is a policy that says we will no longer name facilities after anybody. If you, the presentation in the, your board docs was to remove that particular, uh, verbiage. So I guess I, as before, on the first estate, I, I do think that, um, I'm not sure how, when that came in exactly, to be honest with you. But I think there was kind of a general movement against naming in various school districts. And I guess this group did. I think anytime we make an arbitrary absolute no or absolute yes, it's probably not good because who knows, you know, they'll never say never, right? But, uh, we are certainly open for thoughts and I guess based on our discussion tonight, this would be on the agenda. We'll vote to policy committee and then hopefully make the agenda very shortly here. Any other, other thoughts or other?
Yeah, that I had is if there was any history behind where, why it was enacted in the first place. It seems like it's a policy that's very district-specific. Obviously, there's no law or regulation that says you can or can't. So I just didn't know if there was any historic that were attached to it.
I, I do know, uh, the last time this came up is when we, when it was changed, when we were going through construction of the renovations to the Baker High School theater and then also the stadium renovations. And that was what the decision was at the time with the board. I will say it's interesting because I mentioned this to Vic this morning. I got an email on the superintendent's listserv locally and actually another superintendent asked about this very same question, uh, naming policies for the region superintendent. So we actually have on this listserv a document and it's all over the place. Some schools, you know, are, you know, very generous. Others are, you know, no, that's not the case. And, um, those that have policies in place where they're not naming things, their schools are obviously, you know, have the history that we have had in this district where it has been after individuals. So, um, it's all over the place. It is, as your point's taken, uh, district-specific and it is at the prerogative of the board.
So I, and I think I was on board at this time and I just don't remember much discussion. I have a feeling since I said, oh, we've named it up and we shouldn't be naming stuff all the time, but I don't. There was no ground swell of sentiment one way or another, I don't think. So I'm not sure if this probably received proper discussion or at that time. Do you remember anything about it?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think there was a lot of discussion. I think there, either this was the trend at the time or something. Yeah.
Joe, does this have to go back to the policy committee? So it's got to go through a first reading, which it will after, in the next business item. But it'll be on the agenda because our policy does state that there's like a fourteen day window, a two week period before the board can act on a change to a policy. So there's a first and second reading. So December fourth, it would be on for approval.
Between, between first and second reading, will it go back to policy committee?
No.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm sorry. I must've stated there, it wouldn't need to.
It wouldn't, it would not need to because the policy committee is ultimately, we discussed this, they're recommending it as well. If there's any adjustments that need to be made, the board can make those adjustments right now if they so choose before it goes for final reading.
Don?
So I'm, I'm policy committee, so a little biased about this. I like the, uh, so first of all, I think we got, I think we ought to have the option of naming pretty much whoever we want after, whoever or whatever we want. I don't know any of the rationale for, for this action prior and so, yeah, I don't have any criticism or even reasonable thought on that. But, um, I, I don't have any problem at all, uh, in terms of naming something after a person who also has a name. That doesn't seem incongruent to me. And just in terms of the content, um, really I think all it needs to be, I mean, in, in terms of achieving the goal of allowing the board to, to change its policy and allow us to name structures, anything we want, uh, after a person, really we only need to eliminate the paragraph that, that's there. I don't know if, if people have thoughts about other criteria. Some, and not necessarily a school board, but some organizations that name things, universities, things like that. Some have, some have criteria like the person has to be deceased. And there are some holistic reasons for that. Some of it is cause of interest, some of it is influence, some of it is, you know, sort of, you know, popularity in the moment. And, uh, and that kind of leads to another one, just off the top, I had, I'm like, I think there's a, generally speaking, there, there, usually, there's verbiage in a policy like this that says, I'm just thumbnailing it, but the intent is to say that it can't just be someone who's really popular. It has to be someone who's actually made an unusual and significant contribution of some sort. And we sort of, we take a glancing blow at that. And so it might not lead to change. I'm just tossing a couple of ideas. I don't know if people have, you know, thoughts about criteria for something like this.
So if I could just chime in, one of the things that, uh, the policy does state at the bottom, this is where, you know, we could have that further conversation as a board and we can develop that the superintendent and or his, or designated will develop regulations and procedures for implementing, you know, the, this desired policy and the recognition that, you know, you'd like to see. So I think all of those things that you described with criteria can be baked into the regulation and certainly, you know, the board, we can, there's a full group review that. I know based on the policy committee discussion, Renee had done a little bit of research and pulled, um, some samples that she shared with the policy committee. You can put that in the Friday letter and if that's what the board would like.
Other, uh, discussion?
I think the third paragraph, some of the, what Don was talking about is addressed as far as criteria, to recognize individuals, so.
I agree. See that next thing?
I agree with you on what you said.
If you look at the second and third paragraphs, some of what Don had spoke about is addressed in those paragraphs as far as, and some of them are, I mean, to recognize.
And just to reiterate what we talked about, that the board policy, um, besides, you know, changing the language about, focusing on giving the, other to the board, the discussion to name buildings or, of, of the buildings, some things I just brought into space for consideration for the board. Sort of just pros and cons, potential pros and cons of naming, um, a building or a portion of a building, a space after an individual. Of course, the pros is what we're consistently hearing from the community, honoring a local figure, um, honoring and paying tribute to that individual. It builds a lot of community unity. At this point, last we knew, there was fifteen hundred signatures and growing, um, which shows a support for, you know, this recognition. There's inspiration for students, encouraging students to strive for excellence, continuing the, the legacy of these individuals who have contributed so much to the local community. And then there's always the potential for philanthropy, um, through such actions. Some things to consider, um, in terms of, you know, cons. There may be a lack of familiarity with this extraordinary individual, uh, within the community. Many people may not know the individual. Naming a, a building after someone unfamiliar to a portion of the community might not resonate with everyone. So there needs to be a considerable amount of education if possible, um, to build the community. The other thing to consider is the precedent. The other thing to consider is the precedent, is there a concern that naming a building doesn't set a precedent that could lead to more requests for naming in the future? Although I think Dr. Deborah Burbury, you mentioned that there hasn't been that request like this in some time, so, you know, I just throw that into the space in reference to resource allocations, is there potential cost by naming that portion of the building? Potential, as I say, quotes for controversy, no doubt that this individual did exceptional things, I think just as a board, we need to make sure we vet properly to protect the interest of the, the district. And the other thing that was brought up in our conversation was, this particular individual is honored and highlighted in the Hall of Fame, is this the most appropriate for his naming a portion of the building after this extraordinary individual, is that a better option? So I just put that in the space for consideration, and thanks.
What, tell me you just started to thought in my mind, and I don't want to be too assicurant about it, but the, the, the whole concept and process and value of vetting, I think, can't be overstated, especially since the state has decided that in certain cases, they're going to vet, and what kinds of names we can choose for things in our schools, I think it's, I think it's important that in a certain way, we sort of take our piece of ground in, in that area, and, and we are on boss about who and what we're naming.
Yeah, and all we're doing now is saying that we can name, so that would be step two, is to vet somebody. Okay. I believe, go ahead, Shelley.
Thanks, I have a couple topics to bring up. One, we had talked a few meetings ago about.
Well, we're, we're still on the, we're still on this topic.
Oh, I'm, I'm very sorry.
No, that's okay, we're still, still on this topic. So if I'm hearing, and we have a consensus that we want this on the December 4th agenda in its current form, is that correct? Okay, so this will be on December 4th, and the policy will be to, to allow, allow naming if it's amended.
Correct. In, in its current form, it is presented to the board today.
Exactly, with the, with red line, with those edits.
But are we going to take into consideration anything like, when Renee, the policy committee were new, brought up some very valid points that the judge just reiterated, and then Tony is, you know, looking at both sides of it, will we have a discussion to have any of that language being put into the policy?
So I don't know that you, I don't believe that you need to have that language put in the policy, it could be in the regulation, so, you know, obviously, given the interest, you know, this would be something we would put out there in the Friday communications, we can have further discussion as the board amends this policy, you know, I'm not going to not share, obviously, the administrative regulations, based on our conversation, if there are certain things that you'd like to see, because ultimately, you're going to have to make a decision about these requests that come through, not necessarily administration, so we'll have more dialogue about the criteria and or the language you'd like to see in the regulation.
So we're all, is that okay now? So this will be on December 4th for a vote? Okay. That's item one. Item two, so everybody understands that we are going to use this supereval, superintendent evaluation, and it can be a tool that we will use for a superintendent's evaluation, and it can be a tool for board self-evaluation. So we had set a retreat on November 30th, but we also need to have some training on super eval, because I don't know, maybe one or two of us, has anybody used super eval? You've used super eval, that's right, you've used it one year.
Yes.
You're probably the only one, right?
It's very user friendly, and that comes from somebody who's not that familiar.
Well, that's good for you, that's good for you. So, so we did, super eval was at the, at the conference, and we did make contact with him, and he is available to train us on the 30th. So what we were thinking about was, if he trains us for an hour, then we could do, use this super eval tool to do a board self-eval, and we also, that would be on Thursday, November 30th, we will be doing an informal evaluation of Joe on December 4th, that's noted as, on the docket that day. Yeah, December 4th. So what that would mean is, was instead of doing a facilitated retreat, we'd have to push that off a little bit, but it seems like it might be the best idea to get us up to speed on super eval, and let us do a board self-evaluation even before we did a retreat, or a teamwork kind of retreat.
So based on the feedback of the board self-evaluation, it might, it might help drive some of the training?
Yeah, it might tell us a little bit more, and I think there was a suggestion of facility, I don't think I've seen that, but.
I know it, sorry, I'm sending apologies.
That's okay, that's okay, so, so we just, but, but it seems like, given the timeframe and the opportunity for training, that it might be best to do that training, I'm just looking for, in the senses of that, if people think that's a smart thing to do at this point, that makes sense to everybody?
I think, obviously, if I'm going to use the tool, then everybody does need to be trained on it, but I am, I'm just going back to having a facilitator, facilitator come in for the retreat for board operations, norms, has anything been done by you or by Joe to reach out to different individuals? I know Tanya indicated that she was going to be presenting or providing some names, because I do think it's very important when you're, you have like during the school year and we're, we're still trying to figure some things out.
Well, we need to get Tanya's name, we, we certainly, we've talked to the United States School Boards, they're willing to send somebody, yes. But.
And then part, part of it was sort of timing too, if you're going to do a super eval training, how much time, you know, is enough to do the board training with the self-evaluation and all that, so can the self-evaluation help drive the additional training? So we can look at scheduling that, you know, as soon as you want, based on the discussion.
I actually think the self-eval is probably going to be helpful going into a board team building retreat, because it gives us a quantitative look, hopefully a very objective, so when you get into that more subjective viewpoint on a team building workshop or retreat, I think that kind of gives us a good basis to start on, or at least begin the discussion, so I like it.
Thank you. Sam?
No, I, I was thinking the same thing, Lou, I, I told him, give us a, you know, start and give us some, something to go off of.
Is the evaluation process the same for the superintendent as it is for the board? So it would give us practice and a sense of going through the model?
I, it's got to be someone still, Lou, you all.
Sure, it's, it's obviously a little different because the self-evaluation, we're just evaluating our own person, and the evaluation for Joe, there's different categories, and we're all able, we all go in individually and formulate evaluation, but it's all on the same platform, super eval platform, so once you're on the panel, how to do the evaluation and handle itself, self-evaluation, it, it's pretty simple.
Okay, so we'll plan on that for the 30th then, okay, guys? Okay. So I think that should be it for roundtable.
I have a couple more things I just wanted to bring up, and I'll be quiet.
Well, can, can I just ask you?
Yes.
I think the agreement was that any item for roundtable will be agenda, because everybody, is that right?
That, that was, and to your point, President Jenkins, I agree, and I, I just wanted to bring up, because it was brought up, of community members about the ticketing, I, I wasn't aware of it, so I wonder if there could be in the space a further elaboration of what was presented today by community members regarding the pre-ticketing, just trying to understand it, because this is the first time I'm hearing it, I wasn't sure if other board members were aware of it, or this is the first time they're hearing it as well, just for the elaboration of the implications and what that means.
Yeah, well, I think we will be discussing that, right?
Can I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes, of course, um, thank you for bringing that. We also indicated, yes, we're supposed to be providing that information for agenda planning, the Wednesday, once the Wednesday is board meeting.
The Thursday.
Sure, sure, okay. But there were things, we also said, if things come up, we can certainly request to speak. This is our Board of Education meeting, and I, I don't know what else to bring these things up, I, I, so with that said, I don't know, I'm going to, I'm just going to discuss them quickly because I did put them up in an email, and we did agree that if we could speak, it doesn't have to be on the agenda, if something comes up in between the agenda planning and our meeting.
No, the, the, ladies and gentlemen, did we make an agreement previously that we would agenda items for roundtable?
We did.
Don? Luke?
So I, I'm not going to engage in that about what you said, I mean, there was discussion via.
Sam, did we?
Excuse me, President Jenkins, I haven't finished what I was saying, just a moment, please.
You, you were recognizing, I asked you a question, you didn't answer it.
She did. I, I, what I'm saying is, there was discussions via email amongst the board after the Thursday event that she's trying to bring to our attention, that happened before, you know, that didn't occur before, so I'm wondering, I don't understand why she's not able to bring it to the attention of the board and engage, because it happened after the fact, so that's all I'm saying, and she should be heard, thank you.
Chief from the agenda for the next meeting.
And that's exactly what I'll do, thank you.
Okay, so that's the end of the roundtable, and we are now, resolve Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss collective negotiations with CSEA pursuant to the Taylor Law. No motions? Don? Wayne? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, will be in exec, take a five minute break, will be in exec, thank you.